All right, it's seven o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Welcome, everybody. Monday, February 1st, 2021. Mr. Lindley is unavailable tonight. He's under the weather and he's gonna be joining us remotely. And I believe Ms. Wilkinson is somewhere in the building and on her way here, along with our city administrator. We have Reverend Charles Maxell here with the Breakthrough Fellowship at 1810 Spring Road for our invocation and pledge. Invite you up and everybody, please rise.
Let us pray. It was the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. that said these words. The ultimate measure of a person is not where he or she stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he or she stands at times of challenge and controversy. The true neighbor will rest his position or her position, his prestige or her prestige, and even his or her life for the welfare of others. Gracious God, we come tonight first to give you thanks for being God all by yourself. And we thank you for entrusting us to represent your people and to be your beacon of light in sometimes a dark world. Yet we also come tonight as a nation, as a state, as a city, and as a community at this paradoxical moment in history. A moment of challenge and controversy, but also a moment of great hope and expectations. A moment of deep-rooted division and wounds, but also a moment of healing, inclusion, diversity, optimism, and growth. Gracious God, we pray for our mayor tonight, for the various levels and departments of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. We ask you, Lord, to grant them wisdom to govern amidst the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Humility. Humility to govern the city with truth and integrity. We pray that you will grant them a keen thirst, a thirst for justice and righteousness. We pray that you would grant them strength, strength to do what is good, fitting, and right. We pray that you would grant them determination, determination to find common ground where none exists, and grace to lead our city into a new, better, and a greater tomorrow. Please take what we have prepared and multiply our efforts as only you can. Blanket us with your peace, keep us physically safe, and guard our hearts and minds from pride and selfishness. Keep love at the forefront of our minds and the guiding light for all we set out to accomplish and celebrate. Let us all say, amen. Now for the Pledge of Allegiance. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with life, liberty, and pursuit of justice. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend, for being with us this evening. Always nice to have you. Item two is agenda changes. We don't have any tonight. Item three is the mayoral report. We've got a few items on here. The first of which is a proclamation and recognition of Black History Month. And I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Lewis Wheaton to read that proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is certainly a special opportunity that the city has, and it is a privilege that the city has to be able to celebrate an important time that Americans observe Black History Month, and we're excited to be able to do that in the city of Smyrna. I certainly, you know, wanna thank mayor and thank council for being supportive of this effort. And I'll read the proclamation as it stands now. A proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna in recognition of Black History Month. Whereas each year during Black History Month, the city of Smyrna explores the history and culture of African-Americans, discovering stories of triumph of the human spirit. And whereas Black History Month grew out of Dr. Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History's proclamation of Negro History Week in 1926, and the tradition was expanded 50 years later to become Black History Month. And whereas the 2021 theme for Black History Month is the Black Family, Representation, Identity, and Diversity. And this theme offers a rich tapestry of images and stories for exploring African-American history, as well as present-day lives. And whereas 2021 is the 100th anniversary of the birth of Alex Haley, whose 1976 novel is credited with the modern popularity of genealogy and family history research by Americans of all backgrounds. And whereas the Mount Zion First Baptist Church is the oldest African-American church in Smyrna founded in 1877, and Mount Zion continues to serve the spiritual lives of Smyrna residents. And whereas the Smyrna Museum, city staff, and community volunteers have worked to honor and elucidate the lives, the life stories of individuals and families who call the Mount Zion Cemetery their final resting place by restoring the cemetery grounds and documenting residents. And whereas the city of Smyrna continues to work towards becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world. Now therefore, I, Derek Norton, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, Georgia, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2021 to be Black History Month. A witness whereof, I have hereby to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Smyrna to be affixed upon this first day of February in the year of our Lord, 2021.
Thank you, Dr. Wheaton, and I wanna thank you personally and your committee. Y'all know Dr. Wheaton has been working with a committee of citizens, volunteers, putting together an extremely good program to celebrate Black History Month. And his efforts have been great. Also Travis Lindley has done a great job with the restoration, leading the restoration of Mount Zion Cemetery. So thank you, Travis, for your work on that. We're lucky tonight to have a performance in honor of Black History Month. We've got Tamari Tarpley and Makari Tarpley from the Breakthrough Fellowship here with us. And this is the first time performing for us on this day. Come on up, y'all. And Tamari, I know you're part of the committee I was just speaking about. So thank you for your volunteering, your time, and efforts. You face this way.
Okay, thank you.
Y'all, that was awesome. Thank you so much for being here.
And I'd just like to take a moment to point out Ward Seven residents, the Tarpleys. I appreciate y'all so much.
I wanna say I was very worried about the acoustics in this building, but if they were bad, you made up for it.
So Louis, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to correct you. They're in Ward Five. Yeah, that's what I'm talking.
Listen, this is not competitive up here at all. Everybody wants to claim you. I guess that's a good thing, so. Thank you so much for being here. And they'll be signing autographs after the meeting. Wow, I was up here smiling throughout that whole thing. Yeah, sure, sure.
Well, I actually invite Reverend Maxell to come up and we'll give you the proclamation.
Very good, yep. Come down with you. All right, the next item is a report from our Smyrna Education Foundation. Got Kathy Young here. Sorry, you gotta follow that, Kathy. And Barb Allen here, too. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. That is a hard act to follow, literally. It was beautiful. And we're honored to be here tonight in general, but we're really honored to be here and following the proclamation and recognition of Black History Month and that wonderful performance. So thank you for having us. I'm Kathy Young and joined by fellow board members Jennifer Bennett and Barb Allen. And we brought a few handouts, and I think we've given them over. You may have them in front of you now. But one of them is our Year in Review document for 2020. We often come to you each year and give a few highlights of our work and some of the educational achievements and needs in the community. So in addition to our Year in Review, which I'll touch on for just a minute, in just a minute, you also have a copy of our map of Smyrna schools, the 12 schools that Smyrna Education Foundation serves, a listing of our board and advisory council, and the annual bright side ad featuring Campbell High School's accomplishments, which were significant, especially considering the limited opportunities for competitions and other ways to shine last year. So like most charitable organizations, S E F began 2020 with a full slate of planned activities. We spent the first two months visiting schools that received 2019 grants and hosted the annual principal's reception in early March. Before we could develop a plan to celebrate our 10th year of service, we, like many others, pivoted to identifying ways to support our school leaders suddenly faced with an unprecedented shift to distance learning. And in a year that brought so many challenges, we also experienced a lot of unexpected support, really. A new funding partner helped us offset decreased funding from other longtime supporters. And that combined with our own reserve funding allowed for us to continue our grants program uninterrupted. We're really grateful to the Sharon Darby Foundation for their support as our newest donor. And because we were able to stabilize funding with the support of others and our own efforts, we were able to offer an additional round of grants last year. For the first time, we offered a spring cycle of grants and a fall cycle of grants. In the spring, of course, we asked our principals what they needed and were able to deliver individual school grants and repeat that process again in the fall. And so while we weren't able to engage with schools and the broader community as we typically would have, we did continue to strengthen our organizational capacity, and we spread awareness of the school needs, and we funded school requests, as mentioned. So this spring, our board leadership will change as I pass the chairperson baton to Barb Allen here. We also have a new secretary taking over, Kalila Dotson-Moseley, another volunteer and parent in the community, will take over as secretary. And John Decody has been our treasurer and he'll continue that role. I know that I speak for those folks and our whole board and our whole advisory council when I say that we look forward to continuing our work in 2021 in whatever way is necessary. We'd also like to just close by saying we really, really want to express our appreciation and note that the city of Smyrna was a key educational partner in 2020. You all stepped up in a variety of ways, however was needed, to help individual students and their families and our schools and really the whole community. And we really appreciate you finding ways to implement actions and support that really went a long way for the most, for those that were most in need. So thank you very much. We're honored to work with you and continue working with you. And that's all for this evening. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Just wanna say thank you for all the work that you do for our schools. As a side note, you know, you're talking about getting ready in last year in the first couple of months. I was, too. I was getting ready to literally roll out the red carpet for our students in the new kinda revamped Mayor's Education Awards, and then suddenly couldn't get anybody together. So know that that's on the horizon, too. We're gonna do a special program as soon as we're able to do it, and I can't wait to do it. It's gonna be fun. So thank you again. Appreciate y'all. All right, item four is land issue zoning's annexations. We have one, item 4D, 2020-521, public hearing. Zoning request Z20-015, allow rezoning from NS to GC for the use of a corporate office. 1.5 acres landlot, 523, 1298 Concord Road, Shamrock Building Systems, Inc. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Shamrock Building Systems LLC has requested a rezoning from NS Neighborhood Shopping to GC General Commercial for the ability to use the existing building as a corporate office. The subject property is owned NS and has been used commercially as a bank. The property is occupied by an existing structure that will remain. The planning board recommended approval by a vote of 7-0 at the December 14th, 2020 meeting. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from NS to GC at 1298 Concord Road with conditions.
This is in Tim's district, and I'm sure he'll wanna turn it over to Rusty for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rusty, if you don't mind, give us some.
No problem. Good evening. I'm Rusty Martin with the City of Smyrna Community Development Department, Community Development Director. Joe summarized the outcome of the P and Z meeting quite well. I'll give you a little further detail. The subject property is at 1298 Concord Road. It's the old Ameris Bank site, and before that it was Highlands Community Bank. It's approximately an acre and a half in size. The applicant is proposing to use this space as a commercial or as a corporate office. There'll be no improvements to the site other than interior remodel. The subject property has an existing zoning classification in Neighborhood Shopping, which unfortunately doesn't allow for office as a permitted use. So with the general contractor use that they're proposing, they're proposing to zone the property to GC General Commercial. The subject property has a future land use of Neighborhood Activity Center. They're proposing to increase the future land use from Neighborhood Activity Center to Community Activity Center. And as you can see, to the north, you have mixed use. To the east, you have Neighborhood Activity Center and low-density residential. To the south, you have Neighborhood Activity Center. And to the west, you have Neighborhood Activity Center. Just the orange, you guys, this is a survey of the subject property. These are the setbacks, the buildings within the setbacks meets code. This is the existing bank building. And then the parking provided around that building. And then it has two access drives. The one to the west is right in, right out. And then the access drive to the east is a full access drive at the light of, at King Street and at the intersection of King Street and Concord Road. And then it already has its detention pond located at the rear of the property. This is a picture of the subject property and then surrounding properties. Community Development recommends approval for the rezoning from Neighborhood Shopping to General Commercial for use as corporate office with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall remove vegetation and accumulated silt and sediment from the existing detention pond and refresh riprap around the outlet control structure. That's coming from the city's engineering department. Number two, the following uses shall be prohibited. A, adult-themed book in novelty stores. B, archery and gun range. C, automobile parts and tire stores. D, automobile, truck, and trailer leasing. E, auto sales, repair, and service facilities. F, automotive wash services. G, boarding and breeding kennels. H, boat sales and repairs. And I, bowling alleys. M, farm equipment sales and service in fast food establishments. O, gas stations and convenience stores with gas sales. P, landscape contractors. Q, lumber, hardware, and other building material establishments. R, massage parlors. S, mobile homes and travel trailer sales. T, motorcycle sales and service. U, movie theaters. V, newspaper offices and printing plants. W, package stores. And X, pawn shops. Y, pool and billiard halls. Z, tattoo parlors. A, is taxi stands and terminals. And B, video arcade and game parlors. In addition to that, we have a third stipulation that shall not allow any outdoor storage of equipment, supplies, or construction vehicles. And four, there's a letter from Mr. Garvis Sams in applicant stating some additional stipulations that they're applying to the property as well. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Rusty?
Thank you, Rusty. Appreciate that. Appreciate your work on this. Let's see, could you, being that they're a building contractor, right? And one of the reasons is because the code calls out for that specifically, right? For that zoning classification to be in general commercial. What's another benefit of that, too, right? Because I guess it's pretty explicit about what they can and can't do.
Yes, the general commercial zoning category allows for permitted use for general contractors' offices. But that office use has a restriction that there are, there's no outside storage of equipment, vehicles, or supplies, or materials that the professional service office use does not provide that protection. So putting it into the GC category, it's an appropriate use for that. And it also has appropriate protections for the city to make sure that it's not being used as a storage yard or anything for equipment that's not being used and stuff like that.
Right, right, right. Okay. Yes, thank you. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Yes, Rusty, thank you. Thank you for your work on this. Wait a second, I think, take this off. So will the stipulations stay with the property regardless of the ownership, the future ownership?
Yes, the stipulations will run property in perpetuity until, you know, another property owner or the property owner makes a petition to the council to change the zoning district and change, or change the requirements of the zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rusty. If there's no other questions, I'd like to invite the applicant up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council. For the record, my name is Garvis Sams, and I represent Shamrock Building Systems in connection with this application. You remember it came before you a couple of weeks ago, and there were some last-minute details we needed to work out with Councilman Gould and with you, Mr. Mayor, and the city council members. So we've had ample opportunity to do that. And so I appreciate the extra two weeks you gave us in order to be able to pull everything together. For the record, my name is Garvis Sams. Sams Larkin and Huff is the name of my firm. I'll have to say earlier today, I've said, my dad used to say amen in church a lot when he just really loved what my mom sang in the choir. And I've said amen in church a lot, but usually at zoning hearings, to me, for me, it's, aw, man. But tonight, I actually said amen, and they turned around, they heard me. And they were great. That was fantastic. The best harmony I believe I've ever heard in my life, notwithstanding the acoustics. And they were singing towards you, not towards me. Enough said. Rusty did a great job with setting it up for you, teeing it up for you, and Mr. Gould. Of course, Ms. Wilkinson, I've asked some probing questions. This is a piece of property that's on a 1.5-acre tract, the former Ameris Bank. I think before that, it was Highland Commercial Bank at the time. Scott Cochran, your city attorney, his father was part of the founding group of that. In fact, I talked with him this afternoon, and he told me as a stipulation of zoning that he wanted to make sure that he got his father's plaque back from the building, which my clients presently have. So you may or may not wanna add that as a condition. That's actually a joke. We've got it, and we'll give it to him after tonight's hearing. This is within a subarea that has a multiplicity of uses, is a mixed use. As Rusty said, and this is unusual with most zoning ordinances in either cities or counties, usually your Neighborhood Shopping classifications, your NS or your other classifications that are lower in intensity typically than you'd see a GC, allows for office use. So we were kinda surprised when we saw this didn't allow for a general contractor, which is what Shamrock does. Their present offices are in Osteo, and they'll keep the building they have there. And they're building another building. But they wanted something presentable, appropriate, and better positioned in terms of their corporate offices. And so they're repurposing this building for that. It's absolutely perfect with some retrofitting and rehabbing on the inside of it. And of course, some of the things that are required is conditions of zoning as a result of the communications we've had since the meeting two weeks ago. We did receive a unanimous recommendation for approval from the planning commission. And we are agreeable to all the stipulations and conditions that are contained within my stipulation letter, the additional stipulations and conditions you discussed and reached at your committee of the whole meeting last week. And then subsequently, there were some additional stipulations and conditions, as Rusty mentioned, regarding prohibitions against outside storage, which is certainly fine with us. And then the rectification of any issues with respect to the stormwater and detention pond on the property. This is site-specific. It's you-specific, what you have. And before you is an as-built survey slash site plan. So what you're seeing are the conditions that are there on the ground. Now, if you have any reservations about zoning this GC that really should have been rectified or hopefully has been rectified by pretty much gutting that classification by removing 30 otherwise permitted uses. So I think you should feel comfortable with that now. Rusty kinda stole my thunder and did a great job. And the questions you asked preempted some that I might otherwise have tried to answer or other things I may propound to you. So at the appropriate time, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Gould, respond. Any questions that any of you may have.
Any questions, the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Sams. Appreciate the thorough presentation as usual. You know, I think some of my concerns were
You know, I think some of our, my concerns were increasing the zoning classification to GC. To your point, really, it's driven by our code, just for as an office use, and I think Rusty appropriately so, you know, is requiring that because that is spelled out pretty clearly in our code that needs to be a GC for a building contractor.
Yes, sir.
Positive side of it does also explicitly, you know, state that you can't have any storage of materials or construction equipment outside, which is reassuring to our residents because it does back up right to, you know, a single-family neighborhood. So, we appreciate that being in the code, but also that your willingness to allow that as a separate statement, you know, in the package for future reference.
So, you know, that was always our intent. We're glad you articulated. We're comfortable with it as a condition of zoning and, of course, that runs with the property. Shamrock has no intentions to flip it or sell it. That's why they want, they want Smyrna to be their new corporate home and you should welcome. They're a good corporate city.
Right. And then we also appreciate you, your client agreeing to the stipulations because there are a few that are somewhat perhaps far-fetched, but there are some ones down the road, you know, that could be quite possible. So, we appreciate that. But more to your point, we are very happy to have new headquarters here in Smyrna. We appreciate your client's willingness to purchase the property and locate approximately 15 employees here. So, that's a great thing for us. Economic development's a big part of, you know, for this entire council. It's very important. So...
Well, the city has a lot to be proud of and so does Shamrock. So, it's a good combination.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gould.
And also, yeah, folks, keeping the headquarters in Austell, I think also provides some reassurance to our residents that, you know, that this is going to be an office, office building only and used Monday through Friday, normal business hours. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Any other questions to Mr. Sams?
Yes. Hey, Mr. Sams. For our listening audience, I was just wondering if you could also tell us what the hours of the business is going to be?
Sure. It's Concord Road, the old Ameris Bank building.
I mean, the hours of their business.
Oh, nine, eight to five, nine to five, regular office hours. I gave them to Joey and it should be a part of your, a part of your package, but, I mean, there may be the case. I told Mr. Gould last week, there may be someone who wants to come in on Saturday to catch up on office work or whatnot, but just your regular business hours.
Like banking hours, so.
I think that, I think these guys work a little longer than bankers' hours, but yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions to Mr. Sams?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'd like to invite anybody who'd like to speak for or against this item to come forward and be sworn in by our city attorney. All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. I'll turn it over to Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, with that, I move to approve item 4D, 2020-521, zoning request, rezoning from NS to GC to welcome a new headquarters, new business into the city of Smyrna for use as a corporate office, as previously presented by Rusty and Mr. Sams.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Welch. All those in favor, please vote. And our gentleman on the phone, how do you vote?
In the affirmative.
Okay. It's approved 7-0. Thank you very much. Thanks, y'all, for doing business in Smyrna and for locating here and don't let the process be any reflection on how we feel about you being here. Mr. Gould just wanted to get it all right and so now we're cooking. Thank you very much. Appreciate y'all. Item five is privileged licenses. We have none. Item six is formal business. We have two items. 6A, CON 2021-01, this is authorization to enter into a contract with His Hands Tree Preservation LLC at 111 Barrett Springs Drive, Holly Springs, Georgia, 30115, for arborist and landscape consulting services for the city of Smyrna and to authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Bennett, any background, please?
Yes, sir. Community Development is requesting a new contract with His Hands Tree Preservation LLC to continue the city's arborist and landscape consulting services. The city arborist, Robert Brett Schneider, has worked with the city since 2012 via Boot Tree Incorporated and will continue his services to the city under his own company. His Hands Tree Preservation LLC. The hourly rate will remain the same of $100 per hour as was approved in June 2019. Community Development recommends authorization to enter into contract with His Hands Tree Preservation LLC, 111 Barrett Springs Drive, Holly Springs, Georgia, 30115, for arborist and landscape consulting services for the city of Smyrna and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Pickens, you want to handle this issue tonight?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make the motion to approve CON 2021-01.
We have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Dr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. And on the phone?
In the affirmative.
All right. It's approved 7-0. Thank you so much. Item B, Contract 2021-02, authorization for the city of Smyrna to enter into a 15-year revenue sharing contract with one five-year renewal option with Plainview Outdoor Advertising for the digital advertising on the city's bus shelters and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Bennett?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Request for proposals for bus shelter advertising, installation, and maintenance was advertised on November 9, 2020. The program's intent was to repair, replace the existing bus shelters and provide advertising, maintenance, and revenue sharing. 25 firms viewed the RFP requirements and we received two proposals. The proposers provided their best solution and were scored based on the following evaluation criteria. Financial strength, qualifications, and experience. References, qualification of proposed project team, business and sales plans, innovative approaches and compensation plan. The proposals were scored by staff from Public Works, Administration, and Purchasing. Based on the evaluation scores and revenue share, we recommend award of this project to Plainview Outdoor Advertising for 15-year contract with one five-year renewal option. Plainview Outdoor Advertising has proposed a solution to use a portion of the revenue share to replace a percentage of the existing shelters each year and provide weekly maintenance and digital advertising. The purchase and manager and staff recommend award and authorization for the city of Smyrna to enter into a 15-year revenue sharing contract with one five-year renewal option with Plainview Outdoor Advertising for the digital advertising on the city's bus shelters and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents.
And I know that Penny on our staff has done a lot of work on this. If there's any discussion or questions among council, maybe Penny can come up and answer any of those. Anybody have any questions or comments?
You know, it might be nice if she told the listening audience, you know, something about the job in terms of the, you know, what's going to be done to the bus shelters.
Sorry, my mask has caught on my earring. I guess I'll just leave it there.
You can just let it hang there.
It's a new fashion statement. I was trying. If you've seen anything. Mayor and council, this has been a process we went through with several members of staff to review a couple companies for, to put out an RFP on our bus shelters. Obviously, the existing bus shelters have been in the city for about 20 years because that was the term of the last contract and a lot of them need work. So, our goal in this is to start refreshing those shelters and to bring some life back and to make them a better place for our residents to sit. The company that we've chosen, Plainview, is going to work with us to put together a plan. They're going to do an inventory audit of the existing shelters and recommend which shelters be the first to go through the process and then also to get the digital advertising. So, the council and staff will be involved throughout the process and we're really looking forward to working with them.
Any questions, additional comments?
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Pickens, you want to handle this one as well?
Sure. I notice that this will be a good benefit to the city and a much-needed upgrade to upgrade our bus shelters. So, I'll make the motion to approve CON 2021-02.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. And on the phone?
Aye.
Okay. It's approved 7-0. Thank you. Item seven, commercial building permits. We have none. Item eight is the consent agenda. Mr. Bennett, can you read the consent agenda for council approval?
Yes, sir. Item A, Min 2021-01, approval of the January 14, 21 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Item B, Min 2021-02, approval of the January 19, 2021, pre-council meeting minutes. And item C, Min 2021-03, approval of the January 19, 2021, mayor and council meeting minutes.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So, move by Mr. Wagner. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gould. All those in favor, please vote. And on the phone?
Aye.
It's approved 7-0. I don't know why that's funny to me. Item nine is ward committee reports and we'll start tonight with Mr. Travis Lindley, who joins us on the phone.
Yes, sir. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and I hope everybody's well. The Traffic Calming Committee held its first meeting, our second meeting, this afternoon. I've got some good next steps, so look forward to reporting out to the council hopefully mid-month. And enjoyed the performance this evening from home. One of my favorite songs. So, hope everybody's well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lindley. Mr. Pickens?
Thank you, Mayor. No report this evening.
Mr. Wagner? Mr. Welch? Ms. Wilkinson?
No report.
Mr. Gould?
Somebody's going to say something.
I bet Mr. Gould's got a report.
Just a reminder, folks, want to come out on Saturday for Campbell Middle School's having a beautification day, so to speak. A lot of hard work to clean up the couple of fields. So, if you have time and some gloves and masks, come on out and lend a hand.
Dr. Wheat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just right quick, you know, big shout-out to staff and a really great group of volunteers from the city that have helped out with the Black History Month Planning Committee. The events really started tonight and check out the website where you can see a lot more information about some performances that are coming up, a seminar series by the Smyrna Business Association, Mount Zion Cemetery, and also Smyrna History Museum tour that will be having some in-person, social distance, limited attendee opportunities to tour and learn some more about the city's history and black history. So, look out for those opportunities on our website and through social media. That I yield.
Mr. Bennett?
No report, sir.
Jeffrey? Ms. Heather? All right. Next item is show cause hearings. We have none. Item 11 is citizen input. Nobody signed up. Is there anybody who's here tonight to speak on anything? All right. Seeing none, I declare this meeting adjourned at 7:42. Thanks, everyone.